The Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428 for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No interest in attendance with members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recording, transcripts, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. The agenda tonight, we'll be starting with our acceptance of the October 13th minutes. At 6:35 or as soon as they get here, we will have a presentation from CMRPC and the Housing Partnership, a presentation on the Housing Production Plan. Following that, approximately 6:50, we'll have a continued discussion of the Village Gateway District Bylaw. And then we have a review of the recommendation for the Town's right of first refusal for 44 Allen Road. And then that will have Town Planning update, then Old Business and Adjournment. So-
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is Ed Neal. As the Chairman of the Housing Partnership, we're going to have a forum there tonight. And I just wanted to let you know that we're here as well as Gene and the two representatives of CMRPC. And Wally Herzog, are you here? Nope, he's not here. Matt Selly?
Matt, are you there?
No.
I'm here.
You what?
Wally's-
Are you here?
Ed, Wally's here, but Matt is not here. So, so far it's just you and Wally and CMRPC.
And we're not having a meeting? See, we don't have a forum.
Well, we're, the planning-
Very good. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. We still are going to be able to hear the presentation on the housing plan. If we have a forum to take action, if there's no planning board, we should do so. So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the October 13th meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Any questions, comments, changes?
I have one, Tyler.
Go ahead.
One.
Yes, go ahead.
Technicality on page one where it says roll call vote, couldn't that be pick zero one, or pick one zero? I think.
Yeah, it's good. Correct. Yep, pick zero one.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Hey, you want to make a motion then to approve somebody? Russ?
Yes.
Sue second. Okay, great. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Is Chris here yet?
No.
No? Okay. Dane, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Okay, Jean, do you want to introduce CMRPC and we'll get the discussion going on the Housing Production Plan?
Yes, so this evening, with us this evening, we have Emily Globitz from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. She's the Principal Planner, as well as Ron Baron, and he's also, I believe, Principal Planner with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And they've been working with myself and Janay and the Housing Partnership on the preparation of our Housing Production Plan. And we are pleased to be able to present this this evening to the Planning Board. And our ultimate goal is to hope that the Planning Board would vote to adopt this plan this evening. So Emily and Ron are, will make a presentation, answer any questions you have. And we have two members of the Housing Partnership here as well to answer any questions.
Very good. Emily, would you like to begin the discussion?
Sure. So, I had sent Janay a presentation. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. All right. I had sent Janay a presentation. I wasn't sure if on your end, whoever's hosting this is gonna share the screen.
Sure, we can do that. Give me one second.
That'd be great.
You should be.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'll just let you know when to scroll through. Okay. So, I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as possible, about 10 minutes. So, we can probably just do questions at the end. I'll try to roll through this as quick as I can. So, we started this project about a year ago, a little over a year ago. The project partners are myself and Ron. We're with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We're your local regional planning agency. We were also working with the Sturbridge Housing Partnership, who we mentioned two members are here tonight. They've been fantastic to work with, a great group of volunteers from the town. As well as the Sturbridge Planning Department. Thank you, Gene for everything, and Janay. To fund the creation of this plan for CMRPC, CPA funds were allocated at town meeting last year. So, that's just a quick background on this project. Do you want to scroll to the next slide? All right, here's also a, just a brief overline of, overview of the timeline. We kicked off with some data collection in summer of last year. You might have also seen we had a community survey out. We had 278 responses to that, which was great. And then, let's see here. Yeah, so that had questions on housing affordability, whether people intend to remain in the community, if they have the means to do so. We got all kinds of community input on, using the survey. We also had a community forum back in February. We were able to fit that in right before we could no longer host community meetings anymore due to COVID. So, that one, we had two sessions, and overall, we had about almost 50 attendees. And so, we had a lot of questions at those meetings, a lot of interaction, and great participation from the people attending that meeting. We also held a series of interviews with local stakeholders from the town and local committees and the affordable housing communities. So, that was just another route of public input that we took to formulate this community plan. And then, our timeline got pushed back a little bit due to COVID. So, we had to get a slight extension on this, but we're pretty much, we are on track to, I mean, the plan is done. We're just now seeking approval from the Planning Board, the Select Board, and then approval and everything from DHCD to get this plan finalized. Okay, next slide, please. So, just quickly, a Housing Production Plan, it's a great way to like, address unmet housing needs and demands, analyze what the town has, what the town needs, where there's gaps, who is in need of housing, what the affordability is like. And then, using all the community input that we received, we established a set of clear goals and objectives based on the input from everyone, which is used to guide the town in terms of housing for the next, about five years is how long the plan lasts for. Yeah. And then, other ways this plan will help the town, help influence the type of housing that's needed, encourage more diverse creation of housing, where the most appropriate location for new housing would be. We had a really fun activity that we did during the public forum, where we had these big maps and people pointed out which areas of the town they thought certain housing would really fit in with the character, and where it would not, where there's maybe sewer and where there's not, all kinds of things. So, that was a really great way to generate conversation about the future of housing in the town. And then, there's also the 40B and preventing comprehensive permitting side to this plan, which I'll get into in a little bit. If you want to go to the next slide. I also just wanted to quickly highlight a few data points. We did a lot of data collection and analysis, so I would hate to leave this out. So, basically, the town of Sturbridge, the population we found is aging. Residents are getting older. People might be moving, younger people might be moving towards more urban centers, job centers. Also, people might not be able to, younger folks might not be able to move into this town due to the lack of rentals. The pricey, single-family homes, the bottom bullet here says, we found the median sale price of a single-family home in 2018 was $320,000, which if you're, you've never owned a home before, that's a challenge to get into the housing market. And that's significantly higher than a lot of the surrounding towns. So, Sturbridge is, it's not a cheap town to live in. I'm sure you're all very aware of that. So, that's kind of why the, it's important to emphasize the need for affordable housing in Sturbridge. We also found that the rental vacancy rate has decreased. It was in, it was at 6% in 2010. It's down to essentially 0% is what we found. So, not only is there a lack of rental units, but the demand is also there for them. So, it's an important thing to note. Yeah, another note is that one quarter of families we found are cost burdened, and half of low-income families are cost burdened. Cost burden implies that you're spending over 30% of your annual income on housing and housing-related costs. All right, so next slide. All right, this is, this is the fun part. So, I'm just gonna quickly go over chapter 40B. So, chapter 40B is a Massachusetts law that mandates that every town or city in Massachusetts has to have 10% or more of its housing stock qualify as affordable for those earning 80% or less of the area median income. So, the area that Sturbridge is in, Worcester County, the area median income, or AMI, is 98,200. Let's see. So, a family of four who has a combined income of 79,000, annual household income, would be able to qualify for affordable housing. So, it's important to note, there's often a stigma around who qualifies for affordable housing and who is living in these homes. And it's really, it's your next-door neighbor. It's, you know, it's people who have been raised here, grew up here. These are really middle-class families who either want to live here, move into town, or have been here their entire lives and are facing the fact that they might be getting priced out, especially for seniors who might, you know, be living in a large, single-family home and can no longer upkeep the, yeah, the home. There's too many rooms. Yeah, so they want to kind of downsize and live in senior housing, but can't afford it. So, it's really important to keep that in mind when we're talking about affordable housing. So, chapter 40B provides opportunities for developers to bypass local zoning in towns that are under the 10% threshold. So, currently, Sturbridge is at 5.6% of affordable housing, so you are under the threshold. So, if a developer had a project and included a certain percentage of affordable units in their, in their proposed development, they could bypass local zoning to get that developed. This is called comprehensive permitting. However, there's a way to kind of prevent this from happening. It's by passing this plan and creating a certain number of affordable units each year that will give the town safe harbor, is what it's called, and that can prevent these undesired 40B developments from happening. Yeah, go into the next slide, please. So, I tried to break this down as easy as possible, but this is essentially the production goals that we've established in this plan that would allow the town to achieve safe harbor and prevent comprehensive permitting. So, these are just goals. It's important to keep in mind that the town's not going to be punished or anything if you don't achieve these production goals. So, the breakdown is that the town has, as of the 2000 census, although it's important to note that these numbers are going to change soon when the 2020 census is released. Everything right here is based off the 2010 census. So, the plan is going to need to be updated, at least these numbers will be, need to be updated once 2020's released. So, the town, as of 2010, has 3,759 housing units. 10%, the 10% target for this would be 376 affordable housing units. Currently, the town only has 209. So, that's a pretty decent-sized gap right there. If the town creates 0.5% per year, that's 19 affordable housing units per year, then with the approved Housing Production Plan, the town would be able to achieve safe harbor. Or alternatively, if the town creates 38 subsidized housing units per year or 1% over the course of two years, that also would qualify the town. Because obviously, there aren't developments happening every single year. Sometimes it takes a little while. So, just important to lay this out. I want this to just be clear to everyone. I think that's it for my slides. Is there anything left? Do you want to go on to the next slide?
Yeah, I think that was good.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much, I welcome questions. I think Ron is here too. Sorry, I can't tell who's on this call right now. But, but also Gene can answer any questions too. So, so basically, we're seeking the Planning Board approval of the plan tonight, of the Housing Production Plan tonight.
Very, very good. Thank you, Emily. It was a good presentation and a very good plan. Jean, do you have anything you'd like to add before I ask the Board members if they have any questions?
No, not really. I think it was just an important point that Emily made that, you know, there's no penalty if we don't create those, either the 19 or the, I believe, 38 units every year or every two years. There's no penalty for that. So, it's really just something that we can work to try to achieve as close or as many units as we can in a given year.
Very good. Thank you. Sue, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Dane?
No.
All right. A Mike?
None, no.
Okay, very good. Russ?
No, I'll settle.
Jeff?
Yeah.
No questions.
Okay, great. Once again, I'd just like to say I think it's a very good plan. Ed, do you have anything you'd like to add on behalf of the Housing Partnership Committee?
Yes, I'd like to thank Emily and Ron for their work on behalf of CMRPC and Gene for her very hard work during this whole process.
Very good. Thank you. We certainly appreciate all the work you and your committee put in, as well as CMRPC. Could we have a motion then for the Planning Board to vote to adopt the Housing Production Plan?
They'll move.
They'll move. Russell?
Russell moves. Sue second?
Yes.
Okay. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Well, again, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care, Emily.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Bye, Ron.
Okay, next item we have is the discussion on the Village Gateway District. I think we're joined by Dave Patel, Patrick Dougherty, and Michael Jacobs. I see that, I think Patrick is here. Oh, it's Jay. So, Jean, do you want to start off on this and just introduce what's happening here?
Yes. So, the last time that we met and discussed the proposed changes to the Village Gateway District, you'll remember that the request by Mr. Patel was that fast food restaurants be allowed by special permit in the Village Gateway District. And secondly, that the Board consider eliminating the square footage requirement in the definition of fast casual. So, after that meeting, you had asked that we get together and we discuss this and try to provide the Board with some data. So, we did just that. I met with Mike Jacobs, and he provided me with a variety of articles. And then additionally, I did send the Board the report, sorry, my pages are stuck together, the National Restaurant Association Restaurant Industry 2030, Actionable Insights for the Future. And the interesting thing about the Restaurant Industry 2030 was that the plan was actually prepared in November 2019. So, it was prior to COVID. So, I thought it was pretty interesting to read that in conjunction with the articles that Mr. Jacobs had provided. So, really, if you've had the opportunity to read through some of these articles, you see that Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Patel were exactly right. They are predicting that we are going to have smaller footprints, we are going to have more drive-throughs, multiple drive-throughs in some locations, and touchless, contactless delivery, curbside pickup spaces are going to be the norm. So, I do agree with everything that Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Patel, and Mr. Dougherty had indicated to the Board after doing this research and being able to meet with them and spend some time and discuss some of these issues. And then, actually, I am now on a mailing list for the Quick Service Restaurant Industry. And just today, I got an interesting article, Mr. Jacobs, I'm not sure if you received it, but it talked about Burger King actually building their restaurants above drive-throughs so that people could drive through and meals actually be delivered on conveyor belts. So, I think the industry is certainly evolving. We might not see that here in Sturbridge for some time. But I do agree that it would be pretty arbitrary to try to give you a square footage. So, recommend to you, for instance, we'd go from 4,000 to 2,700 square feet. I just don't feel confident in giving you a number. I do feel confident in saying that I think that the differentiation in our definition of fast casual versus fast food is sufficient to allow us to identify who is indeed a fast casual restaurant. And you'll remember that is kind of indicated by the quality of food, the type of food, less processed food, less frozen food, sometimes the service of alcohol, and just kind of the, even the interiors of the buildings are a bit nicer. And I think as a final thought, everyone needs to remember, and as we go to town meeting, the voters need to remember, is the architectural standards will not change. So, the beautiful buildings that Mr. Patel has built already will continue to this new building on the corner. So, with that in mind, I'm not, I don't necessarily believe that it, people will care too much what type of food is being served out of the building as long as it's the, you know, same architectural style and high standards that we've seen on that whole corner. So, with that, if the Board has any questions, we're all here to answer them. And if not, I would just recommend that the Board vote to be petitioner to see if the town would vote to amend the zoning bylaw in two manners. By number one, amending chapter 27, section 2704, sub-paragraph B, by inserting a number seven, fast food establishment. So, that would be fast food by special permit in the Village Gateway District. And a fast food establishment does allow for a drive-through, provided it meets the drive-through standards in the bylaw. The second amendment would be to see if the town would vote to amend the zoning bylaw in the following manner, which would be amending the definition of fast casual found in chapter two by deleting the strike-through language as shown below. And the strike-through language in the definition I've given you is I'm proposing that we eliminate the language that says that is at least 4,000 square feet in area. So, then the language would merely say, "an establishment which serves food or beverages," and the rest of that definition would stay intact. So, that would be my recommendation. And Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Dougherty, and Mr. Patel are all here if you have any questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, Jean, thanks. I think that's, you know, very clear. Why don't I just go through and see if anyone has any questions? Sue, do you have any questions on it?
No, I do not at this time.
Okay, great. Dane?
I don't, but I'd like to thank Jean for her diligence and research.
Very good. I agree. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I agree. I agree with Dane. You know, it's great for us to take a look at the data and then also see what's happening in the future and make decisions based on that. So, no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Russ?
No, I agree with what everybody's saying. I appreciate all the information. It was, it was very helpful. We're in a changing world now, so, and this just amplifies that, the data that Jean supplied to us. So, I'm good.
Very good. Jeff?
No questions.
Okay, very good. And I have no other questions. So, then, if we could get a motion then, as Jean recommends here, for the Planning Board to serve as the petitioner for the proposed changes that was just presented to us. And Jean notes that the timing, it would be for a public hearing and so forth. So, can we have a motion then to become the petitioner for these two changes to the bylaw?
They'll move. Sue?
Sue, very good. A second.
Second, Mike.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Thank you. Jay, Michael, and Patrick, thank you very much for your help on this. I think this worked out very well. Anything you'd like to add? We're all set, I think.
We all appreciate that. You know, we, only reason we came because we saw the change coming and we wanted to make sure we developed the corner and finish the development.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome. Good night.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I think the Town Administrator is looking for a recommendation from the Planning Board on the right of first refusal for 44 Allen Road. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes. So, you'll see in your packet, I provided a copy of the information that was submitted to Mr. Bridges. And this is for property located at 44 Allen Road. And the property is owned by Mr. Holdcraft, and it is in chapter 61A. So, Ethan and Erica Hillman actually own the lot right next door to it, and it's a little shy of being a developable lot. So, Mr. Holdcraft is planning or proposing to sell a little over 8,000 square feet to his neighbors for $10,000. So, we, as required, have a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, and there are maps included in your packet, and the letter from his attorney, Nancy Codere. And I am recommending that the Board notify the Town Administrator that we should not be exercising our right of first refusal for this small portion of land.
Okay, Jean, thank you. I think that makes sense. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about that on the Planning Board? Jeff?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. I sent this to KP Law, and they told me there's two small deficiencies with the notice. It may not be, you know, it may not be fatal, but the, there's no certification from the owner that it's a true and complete copy of the purchase and sale- owner that it's a true and complete copy of the purchase and sale agreement, and the address of the owner is not included on the letter. So, I reached out to Mr. Hillman to get that information, but I think the intent of the letter is clear, but just a comment.
Okay, fine. Yeah, I think that is true. It doesn't really change the nature of, you know, what the issue is. So, do we have a motion, then, for the planning board to recommend that we not exercise our right of first removal?
They'll move, Russell.
Russell, thank you.
Mike, second.
Mike, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good, thank you. Okay, next, we have the Town Planner Update.
Okay, so, I think Mr. Daniel was going to be joining us this evening, but I don't see him here. But I, at the last planning board meeting, somebody did ask the question if we knew where Rapsgalian was moving their new taproom, and I didn't have the information at that time, and I do now. They are now planning to move to the building at 484 and 3, 484 Main and 3 Arnold Road, and that is the red building across this Arnold Road from the senior center, and Homefield Brew is in the downstairs. They are proposing to operate in the second floor, which was the Pink House Antiques had been there for some time, and they will plan on having no more than 49 individuals there. There are two bathrooms, one is handicap accessible, and the only real modifications will be installing a walk-in cooler in a side room. And the exterior of the structure will not change. They plan to be open seven days a week with their hours starting around noon and closing at around 9:00 or 10:00. They had hoped to be selling the same products as in their current location with the beer, wine, and cider. It does not appear they will be selling the cans of beer to go because of a limitation on the licenses that we have available for retail sales in the town. So, they are, they will be going to the ABCC and the Board of Selectmen for a pouring license, and they will not be doing production in this location, so they will fall under the specialty food and beverage operation and not the pub brew. So, they do have to serve food. So, they are planning right now to receive their food from Homefield downstairs and also have a food truck on premises so that they can have food for their operations so that they would meet the definition of specialty food and beverage. There is sufficient parking on site. I've given you the parking breakdown for this mixed-use plaza, and I do believe that when Rapsgalian and Homefield are at their busiest, all the other offices will pretty much be closed. There's a law office, a florist, a massage therapist, and there's a hair salon. There is also one residential unit on premises. So, I've given you that breakdown. So, that's really just by way of updating you, and Mr. Daniel is on the meeting, if you have any questions for him. And then, I think, just point of clarification, we have a few newer board members, and I just wanted to explain the difference between when I put something in my Town Planner Update versus when I have somebody come in for a waiver of site plan, if that's okay, Charlie?
Sure, go ahead, Jean.
So, with a waiver of site plan, I normally will require an applicant to go through that process when there hasn't been a same or similar use on the premises. If there's something that I'm putting in my update to you, it's because, A, the property was approved as a mixed-use plaza, so there, they could have had any type of mixture of uses that would meet the parking requirements, or there was a same or similar use in the premises. So, that's the differences. So, tonight, you'll see the taproom at 3 Arnold Road, and at the next, which is just in my update, and at the next meeting, you'll see the pizza restaurant that's coming in for 29 Brookfield Road, and I'm having them come in for a waiver because it was prior to that a K-9 training location and retail. So, I just wanted to clarify the differences because I've been asked by not only board members but applicants, so I thought it just was important to note. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, and like I said, Mr. Daniel is here as well.
Okay, very good. Sue, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. The second floor, it doesn't have the fire extinguishers and the systems in place for patron safety?
Yes, it will, everything will have to meet health codes, building codes, and fire codes as well, and will need to get that occupancy permit before they can open their
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I can go down the list if you like. Dane, do you have any questions?
I do. I understand the parking differentiation, and I do agree, there's a strong argument for non-coincidental time usage, but I was wondering if those spaces are clearly marked on the site. I haven't been over there in a little while, but I recall that it's more like a few spaces scattered around the property than clearly delineated aisle and parking, so we might want to ask if they could paint some lines to encourage clear and proper usage, because I do hope that there is a lot more through traffic on this property as a result of this.
Yes, I agree with you.
Good point.
I've actually met with the property owner, and I don't know if you've been there recently, but you'll notice that he's done a lot of improvements and really has been cleaning up the location. And we did talk about the need to delineate the parking spaces there, but I can just kind of reaffirm that with him, and Cedric, maybe you could mention that as well when you're speaking with your landlord.
Very good, thank you. Mike?
No questions, no.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
The only, the only question I would have, one of them was the delineating in the parking spaces, but nighttime lighting in that parking lot, I don't think there's much there. I don't know if something can be added to the building just to illuminate that parking lot at night, since he's going to be open till, looks like 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, so maybe that could be looked at, too, to add a couple of lights for safety, that's all.
Good point. Very good, thank you. Jeff?
No questions.
And I'm all set with the two. Cedric, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think everything's good.
Very good, well, thank you, and good luck. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Nice to be here. Have you stay here. Very good. Jean, anything else?
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
No, just the next meeting is November 8th, and we, I expect to have 29 Brookfield Road, the waiver of site plan for the new Pizza, George's Pizza, that plans on locating in there. He came in this afternoon, and I helped him with some paperwork, and he's hoping to get everything submitted tomorrow. Just so the board is aware, I am on vacation next week, so I will not be doing a report until Monday prior to the meeting. It's just the way it fell this time. Usually, that doesn't happen, but you won't see anything from me until Monday, because other than doing the MVP meeting next Wednesday, I'm hoping not to look at my email, so.
Very good. Enjoy your vacation.
Oh, the meeting's the 10th, excuse me. The meeting's the 10th, I'll be back on the 9th.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have old and new business. Sue, do you have any old or new business?
Yes, I have a question about the renovation of that property next to the dental facility on Route 20.
Yes.
Where the studios for craftsmen are supposed to be in the one apartment. Am I correct? How's that coming along?
It's coming along very well. I actually haven't been in the interior, but if you've driven by the exterior, you can look in and note that they've added new doors. You can see, looking in, it's pretty hollow. They've really gutted the facility out, and they seem to be moving along quite well and getting it buttoned up for the colder weather so that they can then start to really focus on the inside. But I expect they'll move along pretty quickly. They have with the other projects they've done in town.
They were on the roof today. They had the roof stripped today, so.
Oh, okay. They're moving. Am I accurate in saying about the four craftsman studios that will be upstairs in the one apartment downstairs?
I'm not sure that the one, I think the one apartment is upstairs, and I think the other four, I think the other four are on the main floor, and then the one regular residential unit upstairs. But I could have that upside down without having the plan in front of me.
Yeah. So, are there any potential people who are interested in filling those four craft artist rooms, studios?
I really wouldn't know, but I do know when they did the former Briar Patch location, they actually had too many people for that one unit, which is why they started doing this, so, so I'm hopeful that it will be easy for them to rent.
Good.
Very good. Anything else, Sue?
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Dane, any old or new business?
I was curious how the Pilot travel construction is going. I know they had some issues with their fire water source, and they were thinking about de-watering a pond.
Yes, so they, they still need to go back to the Conservation Commission for that, but it's not holding up the rest of the work, and they are still working. And then, I guess to follow up on the traffic issue that came up at the last meeting, I did speak to the chief of police, and he indicated that they're ticketing a lot of people as an educational kind of tool. They're working with Pilot now to put signage on the entirety of the street, no parking. So, what they're doing is when they see a trailer truck parked there, they're going up, they're talking to the person and kind of giving them a warning, ticketing them and letting them know that there won't be any parking allowed on the street. And speaking with the chief, he realizes that, you know, it's going to be quite difficult if they can't get into the location. We may still have some people parking, but we're all hopeful that once the renovations or the reconstruction is done, that that will really eliminate a lot of the problems we're having on that street.
Agreed. Thank you.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mike, any old or new business?
None, no.
Okay, thank. Russell?
I was just going to ask about Pilot, and also thank Jean for setting up that walkthrough at the Pine Lake Resort. It was very informative, and he's done an excellent job there, so, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Russ. Jeff?
Nothing.
Okay, and I don't have any old or new. So, with that, we have a motion to adjourn?
They'll move.
Sue, second?
I'll second. Mike, second.
Okay, Mike. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.